All right, we're going to call the order. The regular meeting of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. We're meeting at 1415 Melody Lane in Building G in Bisbee, Arizona pursuant to ARS 38431.02H. Public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. We will begin with an invocation, Mr. Crosby.
The Lord upholdeth all that fall and raiseth up all those that be bowed down. The eyes of all wait upon thee, and thou givest them their meat in due season. Thou openest thy hand and satisfiest the desire of every living thing. The Lord is righteous in all his ways and holy in all his works. The Lord is nigh unto all them that call upon him, to all that call upon him in truth. He will fulfill the desire of them that fear him. He will also hear their cry and will save them. The Lord preserveth all them that love him, but all the wicked will he destroy. My mouth shall speak the praise of the Lord, and let all flesh bless his holy name forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. All right, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance next. Everyone, please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the report for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. The board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purposes of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03. Members of the Board of Supervisors may attend in person or via telephone. Public may also attend this meeting by phone or by internet. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item, agenda item on this agenda. To speak on any agenda item, please complete return a form to the clerk of the board. We will begin with a roll call vote. District one. Crosby is here. District two.
Gomez is here.
District three, Antonori is here. All members of the board are present. Ms. Gomez is present via Microsoft Teams. We will begin with a call to the public. Now I have the request to speak for us. So first up is Mr. Webb. Is Mr. Webb here? He got extra 10 minutes. Mr. Webb, no, Mr. Webb? I'll set him aside in case he comes in. We'll go to him again at the, at the end. Another call to the public is Ms. Gasper. Are you online, Ms. Gasper? Is she online?
I do not see her online.
Okay, we'll set her aside in case she comes, she comes on. Okay, the rest of these are on agenda items. I will reserve them for when we, we get to those items respectively. Okay, so let's go to first the consent agenda. Items one through three, can I? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. We're gonna, we're gonna have Ms. Phelps speak first. I'm sorry. We're gonna have Ms. Phelps speak first. She was, they wrote you in on the page. Ms. Phelps is going to discuss Southeastern Arizona Annual Report for 2023 and '24 for the Arizona at Work, I assume.
Good morning. Thank you all for letting me speak to you today. I'll try to keep my presentation really short because I know you have a very long day of meetings. So do you all know about Arizona at Work? I know Superintendent Crosby knows about us. I don't know if anybody else does. But I'll just give you a very, very short history. In Saravissa, we're located at the downtown center, which used to be the old hospital. People know where that is. They usually know where that is. But our very short history is employment training programs have been around for many centuries, but under different names. Currently, we're under WIIOA Workforce Investment Act and Opportunity. It actually sunset a few years ago, but as long as Congress keeps appropriating monies, we keep running. So there, the Congress has been looking at a new program that would convert WIIOA to a building, a stronger workforce for America Act. And I think just prior, it was called, just prior to WIIOA, it was called JPA. Before that was called CETA. So you might know those programs because they're a little bit older. Under WI, there are four titles. We're under Title One, which is Adult Dislocated Worker and Youth Programs. And Title Two is Adult Education. And Title Three is the Wagner-Piser Act, which is under DES. Title number four is for book rehabilitation, which is also provided by DES. As you know, we're a consortium of three counties, Cochise, Greenland, Graham. Under an agreement that the three counties put together, with Cochise County being the lead. In the United States, there are services in every state and every area. In Arizona, it's broken down pretty much by counties. There are three consortiums in the county. Navajo, Hila, and Apache is one consortium. Mojave, La Paz is another, and then Cochise, Greenland, Graham is a third. Other than that, they're actually in the counties. Federal legislation appropriates the money to the Department of Labor. The Department of Labor then appropriates it to the state. The state then gives it to the locals based on a formula, which is one-third, one-third, one-third. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, first of all, it's based, two-thirds is based on unemployment rate, and our unemployment rate is very low. The bad news is, since it is appropriated, two-thirds by unemployment, we have lost $1,700,000 in program monies in the last five years. So that's, that's the good news and the bad news. But we continue to see cuts, and this year we expect an additional cut of $700,000. It has nothing to do with performance, which is really sad because we believe we're the best in the state of Arizona. And we still just get the same amount of money as if we were bad. So that's not good for us, we don't think. We're charged with training in demand occupations, and we saw a need for police officers. And we worked with Cochise College to put together a program to train police officers. And just to give you a little bit of information on that, since 2021, 106 cadets have been enrolled by Arizona at Work. Eighty-nine are currently working as police officers. Nine cadets did not complete the academy. Three are not working as police officers. Eight cadets completed the academy. Three are not working. The, the current class is 14 cadets, and we expect all of them to end up getting jobs and being able to work. So in your, in your report, if you look at page eight, it shows you what our required performance indicators are and how well we did or didn't do on those. But if you can see, we made at least 100% on all of them. In the, on the separate page, on the next page over, it talks about clients that are hiring our, that are hiring our students that go through training, which is very good, of course. And in the packet is a list of our board members, a list of our current budget, and our audit. Although I was able, we just got our current audit, which you have in a separate, separate packet. And it's our current audit we just got two weeks ago. And if you're like me, I go to the very last page because if I sit on committees or boards, I want to know how good or how bad they are. So if you look at the very back page, page 33, it talks about are there any material weaknesses? And it says, no. Any significant deficiencies? No, none reported. Noncompliance materials, no. And down below, which I'm really proud of, it says that, do we qualify as a low-risk oddity? And it says, yes. So that, that should give you some comfort in that the money is being managed well. Of course, I can't find notes when I want them. With the job seekers and employers, we have also a business representative who goes out to business. If you own a business, you probably had Eric Grisham come to your place. He seems to know everybody. I went to Dillard's to get a pair of shoes, and this assistant manager waited on me. And he asked me where I worked, and I told him, and he said, oh, that's where Eric Grisham works. And I'm going, yes. So I was really surprised how many people actually, actually know that because he spends a lot of time helping businesses. Our board makeup is 51% from private sector. The rest is education, our partners, CBO and economic development. In the board packet, you have a list of all the board members. I have one board member here that would just like to talk to you a little bit about what she does as a board member. Mary Ann Hochstad is here. She's with Catholic Community Services. So, Mary Ann?
Well, thank you for the chance to speak with you. As she said, I'm Mary Ann Hochstad. I represent what they call the category labor on the, on the board. And for Catholic Community Services, we have 40, about 40 employees within the district. And, but we also use the services of Arizona at Work to help our clients find work, education, get them ready for, for job, job, job seeking. So Veda asked me to, to talk a little bit about some of our success stories. She told you the overview of what we do, but I want to tell you about how it, how it filters down to a specific person. The people that approach Arizona Work, they have some common obstacles. Cost of education and training and basic living expenses for many of these people is a challenge. For many, childcare is a challenge. And for some, lack of even basic skills, such as something we take very much for granted anymore, typing or how to interview for a job. Employees also have some common goals. They want to get into the workforce. They want to get a better job. They want a job that meets their personal needs a little better, such as single parents and things like that. So with that, I'd just like to give you three short vignettes of some of our clients. But they represent, I think, a very good sampling. First, I want to talk about Dora. Dora is a single mother with a toddler. She has, she's a high school dropout, and she needed to get her GED. That was her primary goal when she came to Arizona at Work. She wanted to get her GED and be able to get a job. That's what she wanted. But through Arizona at Work, the counselors worked with her to kind of broaden that goal. She's now attending Cochise College with a degree, toward a degree, working toward a degree in the medical field. She's found stable housing and good childcare. Dora says that one of her greatest accomplishments, accomplishments was discovering more about herself and what she can do. Then there's Francisco. At age 25, his dream was to become a firefighter. He said that his counselor at Arizona at Work worked with him to establish reasonable goals and gave him tools to help him to achieve those goals. Arizona at Work helped him with funds for school, gas vouchers, since he had to travel for training and, and some transportation. He is now working at a firefighter, as a firefighter within Cochise County. And finally, let me tell you about Jose. He came to Arizona at Work right out of high school with basic, the same basic skills you would expect any high school grad to have. Through the Work Innovation and Opportunity Act, he was able to attend college, earn his bachelor's degree, graduate with honors, and he's now working in the cybersecurity domain. He says the WIIOA played a critical role in helping him reach his goals by giving him the tools and opportunities for success. Obviously, I could go on and on and on, and you'll see many more examples within the annual report that we've given you. But particularly, I'd like to tell you what Muriel said. She said, "The counselors at Arizona Work were my personal cheerleaders." She said, "Workforce allowed me to feel supported and empowered to pursue my dreams and goals, and it's our dream and goal to help these folks." Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so.
And just in closing, I just want to thank you. The Cochise Board of Supervisors have always been a great cheerleader for our organization, and I wondered if you had any questions that I could answer.
I just got one quick one. Do you guys do anything relative to workers with disabilities or special needs?
Yes, we work very closely with the folk we have, and we help them find jobs, yes.
Okay.
We will.
Ms. Phelps, it has been a pleasure to hear from you for many, many years now. And for Ms. Hochstad, I helped obtain the, the building used by Catholic Community Services when I was on the Industrial Development Authority. I wonder if, and I wanted to comment that 89 working in law enforcement out of 106 is a very high ratio. When I was in the Border Patrol Academy, I think they were happy to get 50% graduated from the academy. So that is very high. And I would encourage a lot of Spanish in your police academy. A lot of Spanish.
Oh, yeah. Well, in fact, our Douglas facility, which is on Seventh Avenue, it's, they have the majority. This particular group of cadets are mostly from Douglas. But we've, we've had some very good success with, and with the college has been a great partner, too. They're our greatest training partners because we train a lot of people. Unfortunately, with the, the down spread with money, and we don't know what the new administration has in store for us, but WIIOA, it's actually sunset, but they have, they presented a couple of new programs that they think they could replace that. And we're very excited about that and hope that we can continue to do business. And again, we really appreciate you all work really closely with us. You appoint our board members. You help us with getting the money from the state. So appreciate, appreciate you very much. Thank you very much.
Madam Phelps, how do you think your program compares with the DES offering?
DES is part of our group. They're, they're their Title III part of our Title III and Title IV part of the WIIOA, and they're in our same office. We work very closely with them.
Okay, thank you very much.
If you just want a job, you go to DES. If you need training and skill building, you come to us, and we help you with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to hear from you.
All right, so now we get to the consent. So on the consent agenda, we have items one, two, and three. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve consent agenda items one through three.
Does Marty wish to speak? I saw her listed here as, no, she's just listed on, okay. So can I get a second?
Fine, a second.
All right, any discussion on the agenda items? None, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor approving the consent agenda say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes three, zero. All right, next, we will move on to the public hearing section. So I got to do the gavel again. So, all right, we are now in a public hearing. We are going to have a discussion regarding development services. Can I get a motion for item number four?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt zoning ordinance 25-053, Zone Tax Parcel. 407-83-006, District Two, from R36 Residential District, one dwelling per 36,000 square feet to RU4, rural District, one dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Pedro de Castro.
And so I'll second it. So seconded, all right, so we'll go to Mr. Taylor for a briefing on this.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. This is a staff presentation for docket, RC 2426, an applicant initiated request to rezone property from R36 to RU4. The applicant again is Pedro de Castro. The property is located on Denim Road, approximately one quarter mile east of Highway 191, tax parcel 40783006. The current zoning is R36. The proposed zoning is RU4. Both the comprehensive plan designations are rural. The property is undeveloped. Proposed use is residential and with an impound yard on 10 acres with special use approval. Property is located again about, well, it's about half a mile, one and a half miles west of Douglas in Supervisor District Number Two. Property is surrounded by other properties, zoned R36. Residential uses to the east, undeveloped lands to the north and the south and the west, and Cochise Industrial Park is to the south. The applicants have provided a site plan showing their intent to subdivide the parcels, the 40-acre parcel into four 10-acre parcels. Residential uses to the east and west, and also in the center with an impound yard. This is a view of Denim Road viewing west and east. This is the property viewing to the northeast. And this is the property in the foreground viewing south towards Cochise Industrial Park. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors used to evaluate zoning requests. 10 factors apply to this downzone. Factors in favor complies with all applicable factors. The downzone reduces allowed residential density, and staff did not receive any opposition from nearby property owners. Factors not in favor, portion of the property is located within a flood zone, potentially constraining development in the future. The applicants mailed notice to property owners within 900 feet as required by the zoning regulations for special use authorization applications. Staff notified property owners within 900 feet between 7 and 22 January, publishing a legal ad, mailing notices, and posting the property. Based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of docket, RC 2426, without conditions. By vote of seven to zero during its meeting on February 12, 2025. And staff also recommends approval of docket, RC 2426, without special conditions. Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, that concludes staff's presentation of docket, RC 2426. We are available for your questions, and the applicant is present.
Okay. So I have a request to speak from Mr. Clement. Is Mr. Clement present?
That would be the next item, sir.
Oh, that's the next item. Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks. So I don't have a request to speak for, do we, do we want him to speak? Would you like to speak, sir? The Clement? No? All right, well, any other discussion?
No, sir.
And Ms. Gomez, this is in your district. Any discussion?
No, I do not.
All right, well, the motion before you is to approve agenda item number four. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries three, zero. All right, number, this is number four. I'm, I'm confused here because this, this request to speak was for agenda item number four.
Yeah, I might, might have made a mistake.
Mr. Clement, so that would be for number five. So this is, this is number five. All right, that's what.
Chairman Antonori, I just believe the item agenda numbering changed, so.
Oh, okay, all right. I, I didn't catch that. All right. So, all right, so can I get a motion on agenda item number five?
Mr. Chairman, I move to hear an appeal by Michael Clement, applicant in Planning and Zoning Commission's denial of docket SU 24-19, a special use authorization requested for two guest lodging units at 163 North Cherokee Trail, District Three.
And I'll second it. All right, so Mr. Taylor, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. This is a staff presentation for docket, Special Use Appeal 2501, an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission decision to deny two guest lodging units. Property is located at 163 North Cherokee Trail, about three and a half miles west of Benson. That is in Supervisor District Number Three. Property is zoned RU4 and is within a small development of four-acre parcels. These, this development is adjacent to higher density residential development to the east on lots of one acre or less, with residential densities up to six units per acre. And you can see that as demonstrated by the zoning districts, R36, 36,000 square foot minimum site area, MH 72, minimum site area 7,200 square feet, and densities allowed in MR1 are actually one unit per 3,600 square feet. So this parcel is located within a development of RU4 properties, and it is adjacent to higher density development to the west. The applicant's site plan provided with the special use authorization demonstrates the primary residence in the center of the screen. The two highlighted blue, one is a 900 square, about 900 square foot garage and a 336 square foot shed. Again, highlighted in blue, those are the proposed accessory dwelling units, excuse me, the proposed guest units. The structure highlighted in gray is a 336, 336 square foot, let me get this right, accessory living quarters. That was approved by staff in November of 2024. So again, we have a primary dwelling, an approved accessory living quarter, and two proposed guest units, which would complete four dwelling units on one four-acre parcel. This, to summarize again, we have an existing principal dwelling with an approved accessory dwelling. Again, that accessory dwelling was approved in November. The applicant proposes converting a shed and garage to guest dwelling units. If that special use had been approved, that would have allowed four dwellings on four acres or one dwelling per acre. That would have been the density. Staff recommended conditional approval with two conditions, two special conditions. Quiet hours shall be observed by paying guests from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Street and head-in parking along Tequila Trail are prohibited. On a motion to approve, the commission voted three to four. The four dissenting commissioners are listed here, three of whom are from District One, one from District Three. These are some drone images of the subject property. This is viewing west. This image shows the higher density development to the west. This is an image viewing to the northeast, again, showing the higher density development behind the subject property. And this image is of the subject property showing the lower density development to the north and to the east. And one more. And this is part of, I believe it was Romney Ranchats. It was planted, this is done by survey back in 1980. Was originally divided into three 40-acre tracts and then subsequently divided into individual four-acre parcels. And each of those are, and each of those four acre parcels has a primary development. The appeal criteria is outlined in the zoning regulations. The applicant must provide all reasons why they believe the decision of the commission or any part of the decision was erroneous, arbitrary, capricious, or an abusive discretion. The applicant also must provide written presentation of additional testimony and evidence and an explanation as to why that evidence, evidence was not provided during the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. In this particular case, the applicant believes the following, that the commission's decision was erroneous. Staff recommended conditional approval with two special conditions. Structures are already in place on the property, so the density and character of the property is already established. The dissenting votes based on density in terms of the number of dwelling units are unreasonable. And the same as other rationale for two of the four nay votes by the commission. In other words, the applicant states that two of the commissioners did not actually identify their personal views as to why it was inappropriate, but essentially piggybacked on previous comment. In terms of additional testimony provided by the applicant, the applicant does have a presentation for the board. The applicant argues that the photos were more an accurate reflection of the property and counter some of the density concerns expressed by the commission during the public hearing. The applicant has also solicited some additional public input from folks within the notification area and outside the area, and I'll get to that in a couple of slides. The applicant also believes that reducing the number of proposed guest units was really not discussed as an option during the commission meeting. And typically, when staff receives a special use authorization, we move forward with what's asked for. We typically don't have an other option for the commission. The commission can either vote on that, or they can, they can just vote on that issue, and they can approve or deny it. The public notification process for appeals is exactly the same as the original special use authorization. And staff notified between 24 January and 5 February, publishing a legal ad posting the property as well as mailing notices to property owners within 500 feet. In response to the appeal notification, staff received three responses from property owners within the three, within the notification area, two in favor, one to the south and one to the east, one in opposition to the east. Staff also received three additional responses in favor from property owners outside the notification area. So we received six responses in total, five in favor and one in opposition to the appeal. In terms of the facts in favor of the appeal, the applicant has met the application submitted requirements as defined by the zoning regulations. Another factor in favor is that staff recommended conditional approval of docket SU 2419 for two guest units. Factors not in favor, the zoning regulations allows the Planning and Zoning Commission to render special use authorization decisions that is a, that is bestowed on the commission. Obviously, the zoning regulations endows that upon the commission to make the final decision on the special use applications. The commission did consider special use factors contained in the zoning regulations, and that was part of staff's presentation and subsequent discussion. The board must specifically state factual and legal basis for affirming, reversing, or modifying the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision per the zoning regulations. So there are three options for the board, essentially. One is to approve the appeal. An approval of the appeal reverses the commission's decision and approves the docket as requested. So if the board reverses the commission's decision... So if the board reverses the commission's decision, the two guest lodging units will be approved by the board. If the board does choose to reverse the commission's decision, we would ask that the board include those two special conditions that were part of the original special use. Second option is the board can deny the appeal and uphold the commission's decision, which was a disapproval of that docket. In other words, no guest units would be authorized. Lastly, the board can modify the commission's decision, and kind of meet in the middle, essentially, potentially approving one guest unit. So the original request was for two guest units, the commission denied that, the board has the ability to modify that decision and approve one guest unit. Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, that concludes staff's presentation of docket SUA twenty-four dash zero-one. We are available for your questions, and the applicant is present with a presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I don't have any questions at this time, anybody?
No, thank you for your presentation.
Standby, though. All right, so we have a request to speak, the appellant, Mr. Clement is here, Mr. Clement, would you like to come up and speak to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, gentlewoman and gentlemen of the board, staff in those in attendance. My name is Michael Clement, and I am here to appeal the commission's decision. I wanted to highlight again, the staff's recommendation was to approve my special request as it was proposed. One of the things that I found arbitrary, and appealing on the grounds of, is two of the commissioners' kind of response to nay. When one said nay, she kind of had to be prompted for, okay, well, what's the reason for the nay? And the chairwoman was like, is it the same reason as the others? And she's like, yeah, 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 that's it. That's the definition of arbitrary to me. It was a three-to-three vote, the chairwoman was the deciding vote. Also of note, there were a couple of the committee members that were absent, so there were seven that were there, two were absent, so what if all were there, would the other two have voted yea? So when it came to the chairwoman, she hem-hawed on it, you could see her going back and forth, back and forth, and then she said, I'm gonna vote nay, same as the others. Well, again, that's a very arbitrary excuse. So to me, it seemed like she could have very well have fallen on, I'm gonna go yea, which would have completed the approval. I believe that the reason for the density is a mischaracterization. So if I had asked to split the property from one RU four into an RU two, then that would be one living, one main primary residence and one ALQ, one-to-one ratio. The second one would also have a primary residence and an ALQ, one-to-one ratio. So I believe that as an RU four, especially with the nearby residents to the west, which some of them are on small acres, or quarter acres, and have people living in sheds and garage and units as well, you'll see in my presentation that my property has an entire quarter acre that's open, and very much falls in line with the character of the area. So adding two additional special guest units would be four units for four acres, and I believe that density falls in line with the area. I also wanted to highlight that the structures are permitted. One of the nays was from a commission lady who asked multiple times, you know, are you gonna add more buildings? I'm like, no, these are already permitted structures, so I'm not adding any more buildings. So I think she was kind of confused that maybe I was still gonna be adding more structures on top of that, which I will not be. These are permitted structures, they're permanent, they're not going anywhere. So again, it's not gonna be changed in the density, it's gonna allow me to effectively use these structures. I haven't made changes to this section of the property for many years. So it's a corner that is usually kind of the back forty, covered in weeds, and this is an effective use of my property. The initial occupants are going to be family members, as well as possibly my mother and/or mother-in-law, my mother-in-law will be eventually moving in with us in the future, so these will be for family members. I worked with staff on, hey, I've got so many family members, and some of them are in their twenties, they're finding a hard time finding affordable housing. I don't know if any of you have tried to rent anything lately, but some of the rent is kind of high, especially for twenty-something, so this is an effective use of my property for my family. So with the idea of my mother-in-law coming in the future, it's not really outlandish to say, hey, we've got so many members, so many structures. So I worked with staff, and the solution was an ALQ, and then requesting the special guest lodging units. That will allow us to effectively house these family members. This photo is from my neighbor just to the north, looking south. As you can see, the foliage in the area really hides these buildings, so when you're driving down Tequila Trail, they kind of disappear. So this is looking at the property southwest. This is the neighbor's property, same spot looking directly at their property. As you can see, the two small units are smaller than my garage combined, so the total square foot of those two small units are smaller than the garage. This is a view of Patton Lane, this is my property. It's my driveway, but the neighborhood uses as basically the thoroughfare between Cherokee Lane and Tequila Trail. You can't even really see the structures from that road. Driving north on Tequila Trail, again, the buildings are well-hidden with the existing foliage. This is the southwest corner of my property, the entire quarter acre is vacant, and we like it that way, so we've been keeping that as a vacant area on purpose. And adding the two structures to the northeast, which is much less traveled road on Tequila versus Cherokee Trail, doesn't change the character of the neighborhood. These are comparative pictures of what I would also consider dense, and as you can see, it's not very dense, my, the buildings I'm proposing fall within the area's character. So to conclude, a vote to approve allows me to use existing structures safely and responsibly without increasing the density that is already on the property. The property still has many open spaces for neighbors to look through, we'll also be adding additional landscaping to beautify that area as well. Initial occupants will be family members, and as I mentioned in my appeal document, I'm willing to compromise. So again, the two smaller units, one is an ALQ, one, only one which would be a special request. I would be willing to drop the garage. The total square footage of the garage is greater than both of those, so I'd be willing to compromise and drop the garage from the request to allow approval of the smaller I think that's it.
There's a couple of questions. So your current initial intent is for family members, you're not gonna be like Airbnb and it, and Verbo and all that.
Correct.
Stuff, you're just gonna find some space for, I think you said, your mother-in-law and what, your kids or something?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Clement, I appreciate your right to appeal very much, and a split vote on the Planning and Zoning Commission means it was a hard decision. The Planning and Zoning Commission are not known for rubber stamping unanimously.
Any comments, Ms. Gomez? None? All right, so.
Supervisor Gomez is muted, she would like to speak.
Oh, she doesn't want to speak or nothing?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Clement, how long have you lived on the property?
Just over ten years.
Ten years. And when you bought that, you knew how it was zoned, right? You knew that was RU forty, and there would be limitations?
Yes.
Okay.
And you haven't made any modifications or changes in those ten years.
In those ten years. And so now you're asking for this modification because of the growth of your family?
I didn't hear the last part of your question.
I said you're asking for this change because of your family members.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I go back to you, Mr. Taylor. So the three options that we have again is, one is to approve his appeal with the conditions of the noise, and I forgot what the other one was, the two conditions?
Correct, Mr. Chairman, yes.
All right. Option two is to deny that appeal, and go with the recommendation of the planning and zoning. What was the third one?
The third one is to, Mr. Chairman, the third option would be to modify the commission's decision, in other words, you could appeal, you could approve one guest unit. They denied the two guest units. The board has the, has a little bit of latitude here, either to uphold the commission's decision, or modify the decision and allow, as the applicant had stated, he's looking at the potential outcome of having one guest unit, so the board could certainly modify the commission's decision and approve one guest unit.
You, Mr. Clement, you're not building another building, right? You're just fixing up the insides of current structures.
Absolutely.
So there's no additional structures on the property?
That is correct.
But, Mr. Clement, would you find the need, if you were to do this, to then build, I guess, another building for a tool shed, or for something like that?
I would not, I don't have a need for those, no.
Or any other structure, like you say you would not build another garage if you got, if you did the compromise? So I mean, I guess my concern is that.
He could put a temporary building under two hundred square feet anytime he wants, though, right? He doesn't need a permit for that. So small buildings like tool sheds aren't permitted. I'm talking about a permitted structure, something that's over two hundred square feet.
Two hundred square feet.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not looking to add additional structures.
Correct.
I guess just to get concerned, one about overriding the, or going against what the Planning and Zoning Commission says, and second, you know, when you buy a property, you know it's gonna be zoned, I guess the question is, you know, how much, how long in the future do you feel you need to start expanding, and then does that go against the whole zoning purpose? I'm trying to debate on that, my thinking of this decision.
So this is just a special use permit, it's not re-changing the zoning, correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Right, right, so we're not really changing, yeah, we're not changing the zoning, we're just, we're just granting him a special use permit. Use authorization for lodging.
So the special permit is to just change the use of the two buildings that exist?
Right, and turn them into lodging units, that is correct, that's what he's asking for.
Okay.
For his mother-in-law and his kids. So here, do I, do I just make a recommendation and then ask for a vote?
Does that make a motion? And your motion could be to, well, I was gonna say, for us to deny the appeal is to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision, and then the converse would also be true, to approve the appeal would be to, well, if you wanted to, for instance, modify it.
Well, I would, I would, here's just my two cents, I mean, the guy's in my district, what I would recommend is just granting his appeal. I mean, there's no change to the current appearance of the property, the buildings are already there, he's just fixing them up, and he's gonna have lodging. He said he's got septic and everything hooked up to him already, staff reviewed it and said they recommended approval, it was just turned down by the Planning and Zoning by a very close tie-breaking vote and two members not present. I, I, I mean, it's his property, it's a free country, I say, give him, give him the use of the buildings, they're already there, let him put his mother-in-law and his kids in them. That's mine, so I would grant, I'd make a motion to grant his appeal.
I'll second it, I'll second the motion.
All right, any additional discussion? None? All right, I call for a vote. All those in favor of granting the appeal to, I'm sorry, Mr. Clement, say aye. Aye? Did I say something wrong?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
I'm thinking.
My vote is nay.
Okay.
So that leaves a tiebreaker.
Oh, so it's up to you, Ms. Gomez.
Press your vote.
I would go, I have, I have real pains with this because of what the president sets, although I do understand the need to take care of your family, so I vote aye.
All right, motion passes two to one. All right, so we will.
Thank you.
Close this part of it, we will close the public hearing. All right, now we're back in the regular hearing. Are you, are you gonna stick around, sir? I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor? I just need to talk to you for five minutes afterwards, you can come back and whatnot, so you don't have to hang around, I could find you, I guess. All right, all right, so next we go to action item number six, which is to, well, can I get a motion, Mr. Crosby?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the over-the-counter sale of tax-deed properties set forth in the attached Exhibit A plus related administrative fees.
I'll second that, okay. Do we need an explanation from the clerk of the board?
Chairman Antonori and members of the board, this item's asking for your approval of a bid for a parcel that was unsold after last year's tax-deed land sale. This parcel is one of four parcels that remained, a bid of four thousand eight hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents, along with the twenty-five dollar administration fee, was received for the parcel listed in Exhibit A. Board staff is recommending approval.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
No? All right, well, the motion before you is to approve the over-the-counter sale of tax-deed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes three-zero. All right, we move on to Agenda Item Number Seven. This is to a, oh, let's just ask for a motion, Mr. Crosby.
Approve, I move, we approve intergovernmental agreement, IGA, twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two-seven, between the State of Arizona Department of Public Safety, AZDPS, and Cochise County Sheriff's Office, CCSO, to enhance law enforcement services to deter, apprehend, prosecute, and detain individuals charged with drug trafficking, human smuggling, illegal immigration, and other border-related crimes within Cochise County through the cooperative efforts of AZDPS and the CCSO local border support in the amount of one million nine hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and nineteen cents, effective July first, first, two thousand and twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
I'll second it. All right, so Commander Watkins, you wanna quickly address the agenda item?
Absolutely. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Crosby, Supervisor Gomez, thank you for allowing me to come up and engage with you about this wonderful program this morning. This opportunity allows Cochise County Sheriff's Office to employ a total of twelve staff directly allocated toward combating drug and human smuggling here in Cochise County.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Watkins, thank you for coming to talk to us today. It says prosecute and detain individuals, and then it says charged with illegal immigration. So in what way does Cochise County prosecute and detain individuals and charge them with illegal immigration?
See, here, I'm looking at charged with illegal immigration, human smuggling, illegal immigration, and other border-related crimes. So we prosecute, excuse me, sorry about that, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair Supervisor Crosby, through the context of enforcing border crimes, we detain and prosecute people that are in violation of Arizona law. These are border-related offenses that touch Arizona law. So an example would be the human smuggling statute, which is ARS thirteen twenty-three twenty-three. If someone is concealing a migrant from a law enforcement officer, we charge that individual for that crime.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. The motion before you is to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the State of Arizona Department of Public Safety and the Cochise County Sheriff's Office. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero.
Thank you, have a great day.
All right. Next up, number eight, and I've got one request to speak on this. Okay, this is gonna be, can I get a motion, first of all?
Mr. Chair, I move, we approve a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Allo Fiber committing two million dollars in matching funds to support Allo's forthcoming application for the broadband equity access and employment D program administered by the Arizona Commerce Authority.
for the broadband equity access and deployment BEED program administered by the Arizona Commerce Authority.
A second?
All right, seconded, all right, uh, first, we're gonna go to Mr. Casey for an explanation.
Good morning, uh, Chair Antonori, members of the board. So this is to, to commit the funds, uh, for improving broadband throughout Cochise County. Um, we did a proposal last year, uh, for this, for these funds. Um, Allo was the, was awarded the, the proposal, and this is to, to go in agreement with them. If they do not get the, the BEED grant itself, we would come up with a, a project that would be mutually agreed upon between the county and Allo for expending those funds to get broadband to citizens throughout the county.
I, I got a couple of questions, I got quite a few emails on this, believe it or not. I never would have thought this would have generated the comments that, that this agenda item got. Would, the question I have, was the $2 million offered to other companies within the county?
Uh, yes, proposal offered up to 5 million, um, and we ended up having 2 million available for it, but it was, it was offered to anybody to go after this proposal.
What, what I was getting at is, uh, are multiple companies submitting proposals, just Allo submitting the proposal? To, this is going up to the state, right?
So, so this was a proposal that was done last year, and we had multiple companies submit for the proposal.
Okay.
And Allo was selected for the, the BEED funding, anybody could go after the BEED funding, and that is going to the state.
Okay, so this was the proposal submitted to the county?
Correct.
Okay, and then we picked somebody?
Correct.
All right, how, how many companies submitted, five?
I would have to double-check, but I think it was four.
Oh, okay. Um, so somebody sent me this, this, this map, I don't know if you ever, the BEED map, right? And they're, they're, they're claiming that there were areas on here that were colored in as having been served, but I guess there's a bunch of, uh, pockets that don't have service? Does this cover the ability to get broadband to those pockets that aren't, aren't covered?
So yes, there's a, a big portion of the county that is already covered by either FCC funds or other federal funds that have been, been awarded. And so those areas are not eligible for these funds or for BEED funds based off of the federal guidelines.
So, so again, what I've been told, though, is some of those areas don't have broadband. So how do we get broadband out to them?
They, they may not have broadband yet, but they have funding dedicated to a company in that area.
Who's responsible to bring it, bring it out there, some other company is?
So there's, there's various places throughout the county. So for instance, Resound received FCC funding, and they're spread throughout the county, and they have a couple of years to get broadband put in. Um, and those are a lot of the areas that don't have broadband now. Uh, Valley Telecom also has a big portion of the county that they have, uh, federal funds dedicated to getting broadband or fiber to the locations.
Did, did, because that's who gives me my fiber, Valley, so did they, did they bid on this?
No, they did not.
They did not, why didn't they bid on it? Because they already got a lot?
I, I'm not sure why they didn't.
So the, the, there was 5 million, you said, two, the other three's already been?
We, we said up to 5 million, but only two ended up being, uh, put towards this.
So, again, I'm referring to an email, so I'm, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking you. There are eligible areas in the areas depicted that have not, that didn't, that weren't open to the program. That's, that's the, the question, there, there are eligible areas in the area that was depicted on the map that didn't have open to the program. I don't know, I don't understand what that means, but I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm just reading some of the emails here. When the request for information was published by the county last year, Valley Telecom's entire serving area was deemed ineligible for the RFI, therefore Valley did not apply for the county's funds. But many of the locations in the areas are indeed eligible for BEED funding. That's the, that's the question.
I might have to look at the map and see what, what exactly areas. Um, their, Valley Telecom received a federal loan last year, the year before, which eliminated a lot of those areas for additional federal funding.
Gotcha, but they got a loan, but these guys are getting $2 million in grant funding?
Yes, that's correct. We, we used the guidelines based off of the federal NTIA and the, the state guidelines on how they were gonna award BEED funds. And at the time, we used their maps to show the areas that are eligible for the BEED funds.
So there's a deadline, this has to be in by, I assume March 6th is what I've been told, is that the, is that the deal?
Yeah, that sounds right.
So what if we don't approve the $2 million today?
Then they wouldn't be able to use this MOU for going after the BEED funds.
But they could still go after the BEED funds without the 2 million?
Correct, they just wouldn't have that 2 million matched to, for their application.
So are any of the other entities going after this BEED funding, getting $2 million from somebody?
Uh, yeah, I believe there are other ISPs that are going after the BEED funds.
And they're, but they're getting, are we giving them money or somebody else giving them money?
They're using their, they would have to use their own, own funds or if they're getting funds from somebody else.
That's, that's, now, now I'm, I'm starting to, you know, wonder here, we're, we're, we're we're kinda sweetening Allo's bid here with the $2 million sweetener that they get to not have to fund out of their own pocket or go get a loan to fund it.
So that, that's why we went out for a proposal, um, to allow people to have an opportunity for these funds. And we were going after it, trying to help people get more broadband throughout the county.
I, I get that, and that's, that's, I don't want to screw that up. What I'm, what I'm getting at is the, the picking winners and losers piece of this, I'm trying to get an understanding of this. So there's some question on the map and the coverage of whether or not it accurately depicts all the areas that are covered, and that some of that, because the way that map is depicted, prevented potential companies from submitting a bid because they thought those areas were off limits because Valley went and got a loan and, uh, FCC or whatever, and they, they said they weren't eligible. But now I'm being told those, there's areas within that area that are not going to get broadband under, I guess, the Valley Telecom thing. So that's my concern, that we may be actually inadvertently creating islands within areas that are already deemed as covered that aren't really covered.
So one of the criteria we did look at is, is who was gonna be reaching the majority of the county. Um, we had broken it into four, four areas based off of the FCC maps on what was eligible for federal funds. And that was one of the criteria we looked at, was who in the proposal offered to cover the rest of the county that needed coverage.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Gomez.
Uh, so, so in sense, are we creating pockets within the area that Allo's gonna cover that would not be covered by Allo? And then in that situation, if that is true, how would anybody else be able to go in and cover that?
Uh, I, I don't believe that is the case, I, we're, we're doing everything we can to, to try to get to as many people as possible. Um, a big part of the BEED funding from the state is they're looking for the same thing, is to, to minimize cherry picking, where a company will come in to, say, Sierra Vista and only do Sierra Vista, because that's where the population is at.
Right.
Um, and that's how they, why they broke out the areas, the way they, they did, was try to get people to cover all the areas.
And I'm sorry, this covers, Allo is covering what areas in Cochise County? I don't have the map in front of me.
So, so right, it, it depends on their, their proposal, so I have not seen the proposal that they've sent up to the state or when they do send the, the pro, proposal to the state. Uh, but on the RF, the, the proposal we got last year, they were gonna cover three-quarters of the areas we asked. Um, they were committing to that along with the, the fourth area, they were gonna look closely at that and try to get into that area as well.
They're talking like Southeast Arizona or all of Cochise County? I mean, Southeast Cochise County, like, you know, Douglas, going up, like, say, to Wilcox, I mean, just as, or is that Allo for all of the county?
It, it was for all the county that was eligible for BEED funds. Um, so if it was already dedicated with federal funds, whether it's FCC or that, the, the loan, the federal loan, um, those were eliminated from the, uh, the proposal, those areas, uh, because they were not eligible for BEED funding.
So those are areas, like, say, Cochise College that got funding, uh, somewhere else because they're putting broadband, or it, it's, it's, excludes anybody else that has already getting money to do broadband from the federal government, right?
Uh, uh, correct, so, so for instance, Douglas had already received state funds for getting fiber throughout Douglas. Um, and so that, you know, the city of Douglas itself, those, they were not eligible for these funds.
Yeah, I'm gonna go, the map that was sent to me, um, the blue depicts unserved, uh, areas, the orange depicts served areas. And the person that sent this to me is saying that there are numerous areas within that orange that are not served. So because those are depicted as orange, being served, these grants going up and these requests for these grants are not going to provide broadband service to those areas within that area that's covered orange.
That's, that's correct.
Mr. Crosby?
Uh, when was our, uh, so to speak, drop dead date on this?
March 6th.
March, okay.
Yeah, it's coming, it's like 10 days, basically. So they don't have a lot of time, so I don't want to screw up people getting broadband. But again, I'm just, I'm just, just wondering if, if there's a, and I know I'm trying to avoid, like you said, Joe, try to avoid the cherry picking and, and whatnot. So the proposal, the way I understand it, is the blue areas is what they're proposing with their proposal, right? That they're sending up to the, the blue areas are gonna be the areas that they're asking for the 2 million plus, whatever?
So it's really everywhere within the county that does not have federal funds already dedicated to it. So I, I believe it'd be the blue and maybe even that green area, um, from what I could see on your phone from here.
So this map that you, is this your, is that your map, this orange map? I don't know.
I, I would have to take a, take a closer look. We, we did create some maps based off of the data from the FCC, um, and NTIA.
How, does the state have a map of what's covered?
Yes, correct.
And is it, uh, do, do we update the proposals based on that map or on the FCC map or on the?
We, we pulled, we pulled all the maps that were available to us at the time, whether it was the state or FCC.
So evidently, the state map now is showing the pockets, and your map, this map does not, which I think is your map. I think this is your map, that's what I'm being, being told here. All this is going on.
Mr. Chair.
Sure, Mr. Crosby.
Mr. Casey has always been conscientious in my observation regarding this matters. Uh, I wonder, what would it take to fill in pockets if this proposal either caused pockets or leaves pockets? If, if, if you're able to answer?
I, I, I'll, go ahead and answer that, go ahead.
Can you say that more time, please?
What would it take to fill in pockets if this proposal created pockets or left pockets of uncovered area?
So this proposal, that, this, this 2 million is, is a very small portion, but the BEED funds is supposed to get to everybody throughout the county. Um, the state's been pushing to get fiber to everywhere they can. However, in a rural county like we have, that's not gonna happen for everybody, just because the cost would be too much. Um, the expectation is that it's gonna be roughly 100-plus million to get all the pockets filled throughout the county. So this proposal will reduce the pockets that are out there now. Um, and that's, that's really what the push is, is to get it to, to everywhere we can. I don't have an answer to build, to close any of those gaps that don't, don't occur.
So, so, so out of the 5 million you said that was available, how much is left?
2 million.
So we've spent three, basically.
So at the time that the RFI went out for companies to compete on, the, it stated up to 5 million because we thought we would have ARPA funds that we could utilize. Timing has not been, um, on our side when it comes to the BEED deployment. And we intend, we instead did not use ARPA funds because we had to obligate by the end of last year. And we would not know if we obligated them to someone who did not receive the grant, we would lose out on that money. So it wasn't a safe source of funding. So instead, we're using the 2 million of local government and tribal consistency funds, which are more flexible.
So so we didn't give anybody else any money for doing broadband in the county? So just these guys, just Allo?
Correct.
We have five companies, four, or five. Why, why are these guys getting 2 million bucks and nobody else is getting, that's what I'm trying to, trying to?
Well, we had criteria that we, we graded all the proposals on, and they were the highest graded proposal. That's why they were selected, um, over the others. And like I said, one, the, the main criteria was to get to as many people throughout the county as possible. And so that was, that was heavily weighted on, on where they're willing to, to go after funds and, and install fiber.
With the 2 million, though, could we use that for providing service to people in these pockets? Or does it have to go to a company?
If, if we became a service provider, yes, but that would be a lot more than 2 million to, to do something like that and be taking a lot more responsibility onto the county.
You have someone that's, any other questions before I go to the request to speak? People that want to?
Sure.
Kathleen, do you have any, any other ones?
No, I don't, thank you.
All right, well, we have a, a request to speak for agenda item number eight, uh, Ms. Gasper, Joanne Gasper, is she online? No?
I believe she's calling in and she needs to unmute herself.
Oh, okay. Miss, you got it, Ms. Gasper, you there? Can you unmute, unmute yourself, please?
Ma'am, if you just hit star six, then you'll be able to speak. I still don't have anything.
Well, I've been. Guess she's not able to, uh, get on, so we'll have to go, I, I'm.
Chairman Antonori, she did call in to the front desk, so she does wish to speak, so we will try to get her back on the line.
All right, um, I'm just struggling with this now. And, uh, I wish I'd had this information when we did the work session. But it didn't show up until the agenda item went up, so that's what got the, that's the purpose of the posting the agendas before the meetings, right? So people can call me and email me and text me.
So, Mr. Casey, if, if we were not to award this, then I mean, the process would have to start all over again, and who knows who would actually submit a proposal? And then we still have a huge area that's not gonna be served, right?
They just submit their bid without the 2 million, they just have to add 2 million to their proposal price, right? Their, their final price, that's, that's the way I read it. So, hang on a second, they're talking.
So, so, yes, they could proceed for the.
They addressed the kind of time sensitivity to the BEED funding.
Yeah, I know the, March 6th is the problem, I, I got it. But what I'm getting at is, if we don't give them the 2 million, they're still submitting the proposal to the state for the BEED funds, right? It's just not gonna have a $2 million sweetener on it.
Well, I believe that's correct.
All right, so they, and they would have to add.
Sure, I just wanted to.
Sure, Mr. Chair, sure.
I do see this as having a, a strong public interest, um, so it, it's not necessarily sweetening, it's, it, I'm just talking.
I'm, 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 I'm sorry, I'm speaking a lingo that I'm, I'm, I'm a previous occupation.
I don't comment, Mr. Chair, that, uh, department heads frequently make financial decisions and put out bids and receive bids and so.
Yeah, I got you, but, but.
But is there, is it, would there be a situation if they didn't get this 2 million, then they would not put in a proposal to even do it? Is that a possibility?
It, it's possible, um, that, that's completely on their, their business side on how they run their numbers.
But, what they're getting is $2 million from another grant that we got to enhance their. to enhance their proposal by reducing the net price to the bead funding request that they are submitting, provide service to the blue areas depicted on the map that I got here. Is basically what they're doing. If they don't get the 2 million, they would have two choices, I would assume. One is they could say, well, if we can't get the 2 million, we're not going to submit the proposal. Or we have to increase our bid by $2 million to cover the loss of the proposal in, in the bid. That's basically their two choices.
But isn't it also possible that without that 2 million, nobody really wants to bring broadband down into Cochise counties? Because we don't have the population where, you know, not going to be, you know, it, it's still a cost to everybody? Would, is, would that be a situation? I mean, why do we need grants in the first place? If it was profitable, they would have done it already. But because we're so maybe rural and there's not the huge density outside of Sierra Vista, could be possible that they just wouldn't even want to have to deal, deal with it? Could that be a possibility?
That's true. Yeah. Mr. Crosby, you got a comment?
So the, the other bidders were, were looked at. Everybody got the same chance. Everybody got the same chance at this bid and this grant.
That's correct.
The, the, the thing that I'm getting is there were areas that are depicted as being served that there may have been a company or two that may have submitted proposals to try to get that $2 million to potentially provide service to areas that are depicted as served, but actually they're not served. And there may be an updated map from the state that now depicts those unserved areas. That's, that's the.
Do you think that that's the case with a, a former bidder or a potential bidder?
I, I'm, I'm.
Is that your understanding?
I, I'm, what I'm getting is there's the potential that someone didn't bid because they saw this map and the map showed that this area is served. And now the new map, after this was done, is showing areas that were not served. And they may have submitted a proposal, but they didn't submit because they thought the area was served. That's all I'm.
Is that what they said? They said, we may have submitted a proposal.
They may have, yeah.
Such.
Yeah. But, but again, it's a, it's a timing issue.
But as it is, everybody had an equal chance.
Yeah. And my concern is who is saying that now?
I'm getting it from a constituent of mine.
A constituent. Because I'm more concerned about if we don't do this, that there will be a huge population that could be served that doesn't get served.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that, too. And, but I'm, without somebody from ALO answering the question, because I can't speak for them and neither can Joe, is if they don't get the 2 million, do they intend to still submit the grant and provide the service if they get awarded the, the bead grant?
That'd be like proprietary thing anyway, for them to put that out there, because then, then you're opening up the whole bid process.
Yeah, I got, I got you. All right. Is Ms. Gasper available now? Is she, is she around? Hear her perspective on this. She can chime in.
I don't see her on. I believe she hung up and is sending an email.
She's sending an email? She's in your district, right? All right. Um, is it, is there anybody else? Request to speak? Nope. No other requests to speak. So that's it? I guess I got all the information I need. This would be, this will be a tough one. All right. Any other discussion? None? All right. The motion before you is to approve the MOU with ALO Fiber committing 2 million in matching funds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I'm going to vote no, but the motion still passes 2 to 1. All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, number nine. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the Cochise Combined Trust Premium Rate Structure for Medical, Dental, and Vision Benefits for Fiscal Year 2025 and 2026.
Get a second? I'll second it. That's fine. All right. We have, Ms. Graham is going to brief us on this.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Thank you for your time today. What we've got is, I've got a lot of information to help you understand about Cochise Combined Trust. And first off, Cochise Combined Trust is comprised of our county, Cochise College, and Central Arizona College. Each entity has two trustees and interim county administrator Sharon Gilman and myself currently represent the county. So to break down what Cochise Combined Trust is all about, first, the plan is a separate legal entity. The plan sponsor are the three different employers, as I've outlined previously. Our vendors, and this is a significant list. First, we have our plan consultant, that is Gallagher. We have our third-party claims administrator for medical benefits, and that is Ameribin. And, sure, pardon me, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you. And we have our pharmacy benefit manager, our actuary, that is Kirian. And the actuary helps us with a variety of different things. The services they provide help to ensure the health of the trust. And we have a trust attorney insuring the fiscal health of the trust as well as making sure that we are compliant with all laws. We have our life and vision benefit, and that is Ameritus. And, yes. So moving on to the next section tells us more about Gallagher. Gallagher Benefit Services provides us with a host of services for all of our benefits. It's a lot. They help us with renewal negotiations. They provide communication and education. They ensure compliance, well-being and engagement, reporting and analytics. So a significant number of services that they do provide us. Looking at enrollments by plan, and I know you were inquiring the other day, Supervisor Crosby, what our enrollments were looking like. So here you can see our EPO is the most popular plan currently. In the current year, we have 362 participants. Our actuary helps us to anticipate who the, what the numbers are going to look like in the coming fiscal year. And they're anticipating 340. Currently with our EPO, and, and that's Exclusive Provider Organization, that's what EPO stands for, that buy-up. We currently have 107. We anticipate that dropping to 97 this coming fiscal year. As far as our current year, those participating in the High Deductible Health Plan are at 263, and we anticipate 282. And just to provide you, Supervisor Crosby, as well as the rest of the board with some historical knowledge. And we have been striving to encourage employees to participate in this plan. In fiscal year 2324, we had 234 participants. As you can see, in the current year, it went up to 263. And we're anticipating an increase again in this coming year. We have some plan changes and the addition of behavioral health to our Teladoc service. Teladoc is a telehealth platform that, that provides on-demand medical care through video and phone consultations. It connects patients with licensed healthcare professionals and can provide treatment, recommendations, diagnosis over a wide range of health matters. So this year, or this coming fiscal year, the trust voted to add behavioral health services. One of the benefits of this is when utilizing the behavioral health services through Teladoc, the individual is going to be able to work with the same provider every time, which is something that's of great importance when utilizing behavioral health services. We did issue, oh, I'm getting ahead of myself, forgive me. We are eliminating hospice pre-certification. We currently require pre-certification on all of our plans, so the elimination of that will be a great benefit to those who are faced with that challenging decision. Gallagher issued two requests for proposals this year. And one was for the benefit manager. We're currently with Navitas, and we are shifting to RX benefits. As far as employee assistance program, just so that you are aware, if you're not familiar with those, that is a confidential service offered to our employees at no cost and provides access to resources such as counseling. Substance abuse issues can be addressed with their counseling. We also have financial advisors available to us and legal matters. So we did change this coming fiscal year from Purelink to a company called Comsite. And both of the RFPs resulted in what we believe to be moving to superior services as well as reductions in costs. Other plan changes that were approved by the trust is increasing some co-pays for the Exclusive Provider Organization as well as the EPO buy-up. The increase in specialist co-pay is going from $40 to $45. Urgent care co-pay, again, $40 to $45. And currently, Teladoc for individuals with these two plans, they have two visits at no cost initially, and then there is a charge. So next fiscal year, we'll be moving from $40 to $45 for the, starting with the third visit. The High Deductible Health Plan, the in-network deductible is required by law to be increased. And so it's currently $3,200 for an individual, $6,400 for family. And that is going to be increased to $3,300 for individual and $6,600 for family. For those of you that may not be familiar with high deductible health plans, the deductible and the maximum amount of pocket is the same. And so once you reach that, then claims are paid at 100%. Important to stay in-network. We have much higher maximum out-of-pocket if someone does not. Okay, so looking at the rates that are being proposed for the coming year, these are shown here. And our goal is to maintain the cost for the employee for the Exclusive Provider Organization this year, and therefore having an increase in the employer cost. This plan, so you are aware, is a traditional 80-20 plan where 20% of the claim is paid by the, the member and 80% by the, the insurance. The maximum out-of-pocket for this plan is $9,100 for an individual and $18,200 for a family. With our EPO buy-up plan, this is the plan that we are proposing, see a 5% increase of the cost of the contribution by the employee. And so this plan is traditionally chosen by individuals that unfortunately result in higher claims. And that is one of the reasons we're looking at passing the increase on to them. For the High Deductible Health Plan, again, our goal is to keep the employee contribution the same and the employer take on an additional amount. And this plan, I think it's great. And it does, you know, all of our plans, we want them to stay in the blue cross, blue shield network. They get more coverage by doing that. And the benefit of a high deductible health plan is that they can participate in a health savings account. And so that's by tax law, which is really a great benefit. Our dental rates went up modestly, and we are looking at the county absorbing 66 cents per member per month on the employee only and $1.88 for employee and family. And we did see a slight increase in vision. The county does not cover any of the contribution. And therefore, that slight increase is going to be absorbed by the employee. So this is my recommended motion. I am grateful that Cochise County is, has the ability and the desire to present a quality benefits package. This really helps with recruitment and retention of quality employees by adding this great package to our total compensation. And I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
I don't have any questions, Ms. Graham, but I do appreciate your coming before us and giving us that thorough presentation. I do have further comments when, when that's approved.
I don't have any questions. Ms. Graham, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. Thank you.
All right. Comments, sir?
Okay. In regard to inflation, I just heard a podcast the other day about several things to be sure to look for inflation in the near future, and probably not going to come as any surprise to anybody, medical supplies, pharmaceuticals, anything shipped from China, oil and energy products, technology components, auto parts, construction material, and that would apply especially to the jail district that we talk about from time to time, electronics. So in my opinion, the, the government generally causes inflation. So I would remind my colleagues that if we choose various compensation increases to help employees cope with inflation, we will have little but, little choice but to reduce personnel. As the only inflation adjustment benefit we could provide to our constituents is to reduce their tax burden because our constituents do not get an automatic inflation adjustment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Any other discussion? All right. With that, we have the motion for the board to approve the Combined Trust Premium Rate Structure. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oh, motion passes 3-0. Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up is state and federal legislation. Woo, there's so much going on up at the Capitol right now. One of the ones is HB 2651. I don't know if you're following that, Joe. That's the voting machines have to be built in the U.S., including all components and subcomponents as of 1 January 2029. The board, the, so County Supervisors Association is opposing that bill, but I thought I'd bring it up. Do you have a comment? Do you have a comment?
Well, is, that's as if to say there could be no production, there could be no corruption with American-made voting machines or components?
I guess, that's, that's the theory. But it would, it would start after the 2028 election. It would apply after the 2028, so it doesn't go into effect for four years. So I don't know if that affects us at all. I don't know if our machines are going to be built all exclusively 100% in the U.S., but I'm sure there's some Chinese parts in there somewhere.
I'll have to dive into that one.
Yeah, it's probably not going to pass, but it's on the, it's on the radar. It actually made it out of the House, but it's, word is it's going to get killed in the Senate.
It so happens that I did email our representative Diaz this morning talking about the difference between, in some language, in Title 16, which has to do with elections, talking about someone receiving the greatest number of votes versus what it says in Title VII, I believe, of the Constitution, where it says the greatest number of legal votes. Very important distinction.
Yes, and that's an admission that needs to probably get looked at. Good, good point. HB 2774, I found very interesting. That is a bill that removes the county's authority to zone for nuclear power plants. Taking away Paddle 11 authority from us. Evidently, there's an effort by a couple of power companies that are offering, nothing in our county, but offering in another county, a decommissioned coal plant, the opportunity to replace it with a reactor. And that county's Board of Supervisors is getting in the way of doing that. So they were trying to preempt the counties to stop them from.
Like the officials.
From, from, from zoning. But if anybody wants to build a nuclear power plant, we're open to discussion in Cochise County. That's a, that's a property tax revenue source. Like, I mean, if you look at Palaverdi, what Palaverdi is for Maricopa County, that is a cash cow for Maricopa County.
Do everything.
Yep, yep. So I wouldn't, and it, and it doesn't, from Ms. Gomez, I know that would reduce a lot of solar power, land destruction for solar panels if we got a nuclear power plant. Anyways, there's another one related to our county recorder, SB 1455, which would prohibit any county official that is overseeing or involved with the election process, if they're on the ballot, from being involved or having any inputs in anything related to that election, which means every four years, the county recorder wouldn't be able to.
That wouldn't apply to the Secretary of State.
I guess, I guess, well, it says, "A public officer or employee whose duties include any aspect of the election administration or operations from engaging in those duties if they are on the ballot for that election." So it includes employees that may be running for office as well. So it's interesting, interesting bill. The big one, I know that everyone's concerned about is SB 1148, which is the corp 22.5% match, which would significantly impact us financially. I know I called Mr. Gallon. I know Ms. Gomez called Mr. Gallon because she called him while I was on the phone with him, referring, referring to this. That is probably the most lucrative 401K. I will become a corrections officer if I can get a 22.5% match on my 401K. How about you, Ms. Graham? You want to, you want to? Because that's, that's a heck of a match. So what I believe they're doing, and what Senator Gallon has told me, is they are going to negotiate this in conference, which is scary, having been there. And I've told you the stories about negotiating bills in conference committee. Only God knows what comes out of a conference committee negotiation, and then they are not able to be amended. It is simple up and down vote on the floor in both houses. So they are having stakeholders meetings discussing this. One of those discussions is allowing them to get back into tier one under the corp in exchange for not doing the 22.5% 401K match or reducing that 22.5% to a number that may be agreeable. But that are, those are the possible directions that this, this bill is going. But like I said, I'll, I'll sit in, sit in the jail for 22.5% 401K match. That's a, that's a sweet deal. Tell you that right now. But anyways, that's a, that was, that was the significant one that's going to hit us in the wallet if it were to pass. Any, anybody that's been 15-year employee would get a 22.5% match on their 401K. So if somebody were to put the full $26,000 in, basically, we would have to put $5,000, or no, $7,000 in as a match at 22.5%. Not saying anybody would do that, but that's the thing. Other than that, I don't have any others. Do you guys have any other bills you would like, like to introduce or mention? Kathleen?
I, I just wanted to mention that I've been talking, probably was calling Gallon on the food tax, because I went to the Cego meeting last Friday and even heard from Thatcher how this is going to be really difficult for them if they were to rid it. Then I heard that there was a proposal to amendment that they could only, the cities could only raise the tax 2%. Douglas is 3.8%. And like I said, 70% of the sales tax comes from Alprietta, where they come and buy the food and then go over to Alprietta and sell it for twice as much. So it would be something like almost close to $3 million for Douglas. So that's going to be really, really significant. And I think there was about 17 mayors, Bisbee, I, I'm not sure who else, went to testify against it. So there, Senator Gallon did text me and said something like he's aware of it. They are going to maybe possibly do something where the cities that already have a food tax, you wouldn't touch them, but anybody else coming up couldn't raise it more than 2%. But I guess there's a lot of, you know, amendments going on, a lot of discussion. But that's going to be huge for, for Cochise County. If it, you know, if they, whichever way, I'm hoping that they do just allow, you know, the standing cities to have what they have, and then you couldn't increase it more. So if you're 1.8, you would never be able to increase it more than 2%. So we'll see what happens.
Yep. It will pass if it makes it to the ballot, though. That's the thing. So if it comes out of the legislature, it's, it's going to go. That's the only downside. All right, any other comments real quick? Then the next thing will go to any reports from Ms. Gilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Just want to update you real quick on my calendar. Over the next two weeks, I'll be meeting with department directors on their budget development plans. So my, my calendar is kind of heavy with meetings day after day. But I'm, of course, available should you need me. And on March 5th, we have the Cochise County Tourism and Economic Council meeting. I'll be meeting with all the city managers who are a part of that agreement. And we'll certainly share with them your concerns regarding metrics and return on that investment. And that's all I have.
Was that March 5th? I'm sorry.
March 5th.
Sharon, is that March 5th? Okay, thanks.
All right, next we'll go to current events in our districts. Mr. Crosby, anything you'd like to mention in District 1?
I'll pass next.
District 2?
I'll pass for this moment.
And I'll pass as well in District 3. All right, so the next meeting will be a special board meeting, possible executive session today at 1:00 PM to discuss in the executive conference room, job titles, descriptions, and the current interim county and deputy county administrators. All right, with that, we're adjourned.